Now, I'll have a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want our listening audience and also the audience here, please excuse us for being late. We, our council agenda is fairly thick and we tried to exhaust every subject and I understand our listening public and also our citizens definitely appreciate the fact that this council works hard and we dwell into the nuts and bolts of everything that come before us. And with that, I would like to also have a moment of silence for the individuals in Pittsburgh and the events that went on in the last week with respect to the packages. A moment of silence, please. Just a word of comment, I'd like for our listening audience and also our audience here to realize that we are more like the people who rushed to aid the individual who were being harmed than we are the individuals who were doing the harming. It's just atrocious what has gone on within the last week here in the United States of America. And it's symbolic of perhaps things that should be done to make sure that we are always a polite society and also a giving society and a welcoming society. With respect to that, we will now move to presentations. Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
We have a lot of good news to share this evening and I'm pleased to present a number of things. At your study meeting last week, we had a review of the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival that was held this past August. That was a huge success and the council has authorized the city attorney to draw up a new contract for 2019, for August 2019, for the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival once again. In the audience this evening is Ms. Horn, I'd ask her to come up. And she has a few words to share and we also have the dates to announce that the concert, the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival, a two-day event, will take place on August 10th and 11th, 2019, on the front lawn of the Southfield Civic Center. Ms. Horn?
Thank you so much, Mayor. As you mentioned, the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival 2018 was a huge, huge success and truly I'm excited to be here today and I just wanted to share a couple of the things that happened and personally thank Mayor Ken Seiver, the city council, and the Southfield city residents for being there. I also like to personally think, thank the volunteers director, Mr. Dolores Flag was right there along the way from the very beginning, the vendors director, Vicky Perry, all of the vendors were extremely happy. We are still receiving a lot of positive feedback on the turnout, on how the festival and the grounds were gorgeous. I mean, it was spacious, there was plenty room for parking. For those of you that don't know, I debuted the festival in 2016 in Lathrop Village and it was small and quaint but still very successful, but nothing can compare to the amount of people that we got here for those two days. Mother Nature definitely was in our favor, we had a perfect two days. We even had special guests that was featured with us from your own council board, councilwoman Tanya Morris. Give it up for her, ladies and gentlemen, she did a fantastic job. I'm hoping that she'll join us again in 2019 for just a couple songs. No, but it was extremely, extremely successful. I have to definitely thank the Southfield libraries team, Dave Uwicke and his whole team helped to put a lot of the promotional material together. And of course, the public relations director, Mr. Michael Mannion, him and his team was amazing, Elizabeth, we got so much information out and, you know, so many people heard about it through TV, radio, magazines. I'm extremely thankful for my presenting sponsor, Varsity Lincoln. They were able to help promote not only the city of Southfield and Kimmy Horn but also Varsity Lincoln with doing 20 billboards throughout the regional area that stretched all the way out to towards Toledo. So, I think that we got a big turnout and help because of that. So again, I mean, along with the Terry with the parking wrecks, I don't know if I mentioned, Terry Fields, yes, amazing job, thank you so much, yes, absolutely amazing. And I can't, you know, I can't move on without saying to all of the great feedback that we got about the Southfield Police Department. You know, people were welcomed warmly, they assisted and helped people across the street, it was safe, and I have to say there was no incident. That's huge to have the amount of people that we had for a two-day free festival and that was truly successful because of the Southfield, the Southfields Police Department's presence. So, we are very thankful for them, can we give it up for them? Oh yeah, the emergency management team, we thank them so much. And of course, the Southfield Historical Society, Darla Van Hoy, we could not have made this happen without her, thank you so much. I think I, I think I covered everything but overall, I just really wanted to thank everyone because hosting it here was extremely, extremely warm. Dolores, you and the volunteers, I mean, I'm still receiving emails and feedback on how the volunteers walked around and they really helped assist everyone. And it was so special for people to be able to come up to me and say, you know what, we haven't experienced that, you know, the kind of, the kind of feedback that we got was so positive. So, again, I just wanted to thank everyone and I look forward to 2019 and hosting it again and working with a tight partnership with you, Mayor Kenson Seiver and the president, we really, really appreciate you. And so, I did bring a certificate that I'd like to present to Mayor Kenson Seiver and the city council. And what it says is, "Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival 2018 Certificate of Appreciation and Recognition to Mayor Kenson Seiver and the City Council, Southfield, Michigan, for the exceptional support and partnership of the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival presented this day." Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes. If you don't mind, can I just take a few minutes to just get a couple pictures?
Sure.
Do we need to step in from in front of?
Go ahead, get in the podium.
Yes.
All right, Kim, come on.
Three, ladies and gentlemen, one, two, three.
And again, those dates are August 10th and 11th, 2019. Next, we have a joint resolution on the Bells of Peace Day, which I will read shortly. There's a national, city councils all through the United States are passing this resolution. This is a joint council-mayor resolution declaring November 11th, 2018, as Bells of Peace Day. This resolution is in, to mark the 100th year since the conclusion of World War I. I'm asking council to approve this resolution this evening. We will be presenting the resolution as part of our Veterans Day program on November 9th at 11:00 a.m. in these chambers. And the resolution reads as follows, "Whereas the world was irrevocably changed by the events of World War I known as the Great War, in which 375 Americans were wounded and an additional 116,516 lives were lost, and whereas 4.5 million American men and women served selfishly and honorably in World War I, including many from Southfield who sacrificed for our community and country, the future and the future of our nation. And whereas in 1918, on the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, an armistice, or temporary secession of hostilities, was declared between the Allied nations and Germany and for years afterwards celebrated as Armistice Day, whereas in 1954, Congress voted to rename Armistice Day to Veterans Day to honor the veterans of all wars. Whereas 2018 marks the centennial commemoration of Armistice Day, now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby declare Bells of Peace Day in the city of Southfield, Michigan. And be it further resolved that the citizens and institutions of Southfield are urged to remember those who served in World War I and other military conflicts and to reelect and to reflect on how we can achieve peace for future generations to come." So, I'm asking for a motion.
I, I move that we approve the joint resolution, Bells of Peace Day, to honor those that fought in the war, first, First World War of the war to end all wars.
Support.
The move by Mr. Fraser, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we approve the presentation of the joint resolution, Bells of Peace Day. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. It is approved.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Veterans Commission, Commissioner Barbara Selden to come forward. And I'd like to present this to you now that it is approved and you can share it with the Veterans Commission. Further, I do want to take another moment to talk about Veterans Day this year. We are changing the program and we are inviting anyone to come that would like to honor a veteran. The beginning of the program will be a focus on World War I, as this is the 100th year since its conclusion. But we will be ringing bells and people are welcome to participate. We're trying to get more local and personal participation rather than have a speaker come in from outside the community. So, we're, we're doing a series of remembrances and anyone who would like to honor a veteran at the 11 o'clock program on November 9th is welcome to come. We will ask them to speak for a minute or so and we'll chime the bell in their, in their memory. And again, this is open to our entire community. Anything you'd like to add?
I'm looking forward to November the 9th and I think it's going to be a wonderful representation from our city to those who gave their lives or limbs for our freedom. I think so much about what is happening in our world today and how much is going on that we could really prevent as we think about that International Day of Peace. And I think about, wouldn't it be wonderful if we would all use that one day to be peaceful and then carry it through for 365 days? The world would be a better place, no divisiveness, no hate, everybody just stepping in the other person's shoes and recognizing their differences and mostly our similarities. Thank you, Ken, for letting me say a few words.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next, I have a resolution regarding, we've done this for a number of years now, Extra Mile Day, which is November 1st. And I'd like to call up Marcia Gamble Griffin, Robert John Cox, Patricia McLamore, and Darla Van Hoy. These Southfield residents are honorees this year. And the proclamation from the mayor reads as follows, "Whereas Southfield is a community that appreciates when its citizens go the extra mile in personal effort, and whereas through the various efforts to support the community such as the Big Rake, Friends of Southfield Public Arts, the annual Martins through King Peace Walk celebration, or serving on an advisory board or commission, Southfield is a community that chooses to shine light on those individuals who give of themselves with total effort to go the extra mile." And so, rather than read the rest of the resolution, I would like to talk about these four individuals who are joining many others who've come before them for giving extra service and their time and devotion to the city of Southfield. Again, November 1st nationally is Extra Mile Day and for the past several years, we've paid attention, we've called attention to folks that go above and beyond and, and we are thankful for the support organizations that Southfield has such as the Parks and Garden Club, the Friends of the Southfield Public Library, the Southfield Historical Society, our CERT volunteers, and all of our various boards and commission members plus neighborhood presidents that just last week, we saluted with a community dinner. So first, I'd like to ask Darla Van Hoy to come forward. Darla serves as the president of the Southfield Historical Society and under her leadership, she has transformed the Southfield History Museum at the Berg Park. It is a much more open and friendly and organized place. Further, with members of the historical society, she has curated exhibitions at the museum on Southfield's connection to the Underground Railroad and Southfield's early Native American peoples. In addition, Ms. Van Hoy has organized open houses at the Mary Thompson Farmhouse and assisted with school group tours of the Berg and the Thompson Farmhouse. Her volunteerism doesn't stop there, Ms. Van Hoy is active in the Friends of the Southfield Public Library, assisting with programs at the library and serving on the city's historic district commission and the historic designation advisory board. Darla, we thank you for all the many hours you've put in. Next, Patricia, or Pat McLamore. Pat has been a very active member of the Southfield Parks and Garden Club for many years and last spring, she assumed the leadership of this organization in trying time for the garden club. And consequently, the Southfield Parks and Garden Club has flourished this year under her leadership. The club has completed a number of yard makeovers and cleanups for our citizen, senior citizens, elderly or handicapped residents, conducted litter patrols, helped organize the annual garden walk and the fall perennial exchange and plant sale. And the planting of historically accurate plants around the Thompson Farmhouse. In addition, Ms. McLamore serves on the historic district commission and works with the Southfield Historical Society. Pat, thank you for everything. Marcia Griffin. Many of you know Marcia, she has been an active resident for many, many years in Southfield. She serves as president of the Southfield Gardens Homeowner Association, long active in the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. Mrs. Griffin is a former president of that organization and she is well-involved in the Delta sister organization, the Torch of Wisdom Foundation. Both the Deltas and the Torch of Wisdom host many public service causes of which she has been involved, many of them, of course, Southfield is the beneficiary. Beyond that, Mrs. Griffin is a member of the city's CERT or Emergency Management or Preparedness Team, rather, and volunteers at the South Oakland Shelter and has served as a judge in the annual Community Pride Awards Program. Marcia, thank you so much. And finally, Robert John Cox. Robert maintains a very low profile, matter of fact, I know I'm making him uncomfortable this evening. He doesn't feel he's deserving, however, I do. I greatly appreciate, and a number of you have received emails and observations, Robert watches what we do and has some very timely suggestions, but one thing that Robert and I share in common is we both have a great dislike for litter. And Robert takes walks around the city and when he does, he goes around and picking up litter. Curb appeal is very important to him. Robert is also a volunteer for Jewish Family Services on its fix-up day that is coming up with, at Sherizetic Synagogue. And he is a financial supporter of many of the city's public art initiatives. But most of all, Mr. John Cox has been, has been a top, way over the top volunteer for the annual Big Rake. Last year, not only did he turn up every Saturday to rake leaves, he came back during the week, I think every day during the week, and raked leaves in our annual Big Rake, filling 132 bags that, 200, you bought 100, we ran out of bags, he bought 132, how many, how many?
It was over 200.
Over, over 200 bags of leaves. I, again, he doesn't feel he's worthy of this recognition and I beg to differ. Mr. John Cox, thank you so much. Thank you all. Next, we have the annual resolution, joint resolution for United Nations Day and I'd ask Roberta Cotman to come forward. And Mr. Brightwell, this is a joint. And Mr. Brightwell, if you don't mind, I'll quickly read this so move things along, but we have a joint resolution from the council and mayor, United Nations Day. Whereas United Nations Day commemorates the anniversary of the United Nations Charter and the official entry in of this organization, and whereas 2018 marks the 73rd anniversary of the United Nations and recognizes the many achievements and commitments to world peace.
Seventy-third.
Many achievements and commitment to world peace and security, protecting human rights, promoting economic development and providing aid around the world in cases of famine, national disaster, natural disaster, armed conflict, and I would also say epidemics and health issues. Whereas since the beginning of the United States has provided leadership and vision to this important forum addressing international and regional challenges of the 21st century, whereas the United, on United Nations Day, the world comes together to celebrate the cooperation of nations to achieve international peace and security and develop friendly relations among nations. And whereas, United Nations Day is a day we acknowledge all men and women who serve around the world in peacekeeping and humanitarian missions and all those who work to keep our world safe. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the mayor and council, city of Southfield, county of Oakland, state of Michigan, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2018, as United Nations Day in the city of Southfield, Michigan. I present this to you.
I commend the council and our mayor again to recognize this essential day from all over the world. With me today is Dr. Fred Pearson from the Department of Political Science as well as the Center for Peace and Conflict Studies. One minute, Dr. Fred.
I was very pleased to hear the recognition of the anniversary of the end of the First World War and I would just remind us all that the United Nations is the direct descendant of President Wilson's efforts after that war to prevent a recurrence. Through the League of Nations at that time, wasn't successful, but we moved forward and we created the United Nations. And unfortunately, we're having a great deal of erosion of, of support for international institutions these days, which is alarming. And I would hope that the Southfield City Council and all of our cities would take a role in speaking up for its international connections. I had the pleasure of dedicating a city of peace at Zihuatanejo in Mexico. These cities can be officially designated as UN Cities of Peace and they spread that effort to have cross-border cooperation, which is so essential at this very moment. Thank you very much. You have some more?
Southfield is already an international city. Barbara Selden, for years, has always been a representative for us and we'll remind you that indeed we are an international city. Barbara?
I am pleased and honored to represent my city, the city of Southfield. I feel like I am an advocate for you and I positively represent you because we are the center of it all. My travels to our sister city, South Korea, with Mayor Seiver and our Southfield delegation only served to solidify my thoughts about the importance of embracing diversity and getting to know other cultures throughout the world and its impact on peace. It is such a positive way to build a sustainable and a peaceful world. When you engage in mutual exchange among cultures, you discover that we have more similarities than we have differences. When I, with the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Task Force, attended Estapa de Wataneno Guerrero, Mexico, we established a peace pole and that peace pole connected Southfield with Mexico in establishing all of the different characteristics that makes for the mutuality of peace. So, I'm grateful and thankful to be a part of you and I plan to continue. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are recommending therefore that the council and the mayor approve temporarily a committee to do the framework so that Southfield, city years old, already an America city, will become an international city. We'll be working with the Lawrence Tech University, we will be also working with Oakland Community College. We will also hopefully work with Mr. Mannion, Mr. Mannion.
Mannion.
Therefore, we are an international city.
Let me give this to you.
Okay.
You want to get a picture with it?
We need a resolution, so a motion, it's a joint resolution.
Also, will Mr. Chairman?
Support.
Also, will Mr. Chairman support?
Moved by Mr. Lacoste, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve this resolution? All in favor?
Aye.
Guys, have it.
Next, we have a presentation on the Keep Michigan Beautiful Awards. And I'd like to call up Terry Field, Cost, Pathonic, Lori Dillon, and we have one other person, right? Is Teresa Proctor here?
No.
Oh, okay. All right. So every... Come closer, come closer. Yeah. Sure.
I just got a note. There's an automobile that's blocking the circular drive in front of City Hall and it has a handicap plate, G4004, a dark 2014 Buick Regal. So if that is your vehicle, you're blocking traffic in the traffic circle and someone needs to exit. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Quite all right. Every year, the organization that, and Southfield is part of this organization, it's Keep Michigan Beautiful. They recognize work that's done in communities across the state for external improvements. And this year, we, the City of Southfield, is a recipient of two awards, the President's Award and a Michigan Award. The President's Award is presented to the City of Southfield. It's a beautiful plaque and it's for the berg, the grounds at the Berg Historic Park. I think this really came about because of Lori's, if you've ever been over during the day, Lori keeps that park just in top condition and it's a beautiful array of flowers all year long. We're very proud of the Berg Park. And this June, last past June, the City of Southfield hosted Keep Michigan Beautiful, the southeastern chapter of the state organization. And they looked around and were just, it was over the top reaction, oh my gosh, what a beautiful, beautiful park you have here. And so obviously, people were impressed to the point where we won, or I should say Lori and Cost and the department won, the top, the President's Award for Keep Michigan Beautiful. So we congratulate all of you on a job well done. Present this to you, I've got the cover for that. But we wanted to acknowledge, publicly acknowledge, the work of our Parks, Park Services Department. And if you wait, I'll give you the cover in a sec. Thank you. And then, secondly, there was another award and this one was presented to, I'll ask Dolores Flag to come up. And, oh, Kyle, I'm sorry. Dolores Flag serves as the chairperson of the Southfield Public Arts Commission. Kyle Bryce is the administrative liaison to the Arts Commission. He is a planner one, works in our planning department and joined us about a year ago and has been a great addition to the department. So the Southfield Public Arts Commission has won a Michigan Award from the Keep Michigan Beautiful. Both of these awards were received in Frankenmuth on October 12th. And it's for, the award is given for the rescue of the Northland Art Collection and putting this art collection out. As all of you know, recently, we added the peacock from the Northland, formerly at the Northland, it was a peacock court before the mall was enclosed. And so we have the Michigan Award awarded to the Arts Commission specifically for their work on saving and still a work in progress, restoring the Northland Art Collection. So I present this to both of you and thank you and congratulate you for all your hard work. Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Call you up after.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, we will now have...
Good evening.
Report of council?
Yes.
Good evening, Badri.
Councilman Cruz, as chairperson of the boards and commissions, had requested earlier in the year that boards and commissions make a presentation to council on what they're working on. Tonight, we have the City Center Advisory Board and the Planning Commission, they'll be making presentations. And next month, we will have the Arts Commission come and make a presentation. Those are the three boards and commissions that the Planning Department works closely with. Our first presentation is the City Center Advisory Board. And tonight, we have Ms. Paula Goldman Spinner, the chair, and Representative of Showstack Brothers that's going to do an introduction.
Thank you, Terry. So I am the chair of City Center Advisory Board. I think I missed a meeting once and became chair, so I've been here. I haven't missed a meeting since, so. But I'd like to just give you a brief history of the City Center Advisory Board. It was established by the city council on October 24th, 1992. We meet the second Tuesday of every month. The CCAB is composed of nine local business leaders, the mayor, and one residential representative. Our mission statement is to create and maintain a vibrant 24/7 pedestrian-friendly mixed-use environment. We are primarily funded through an assessment, special assessment district. Currently, the, that assessment is five cents per square foot of non-residential. And the district was voted by local businesses to expand to 10.30, that's a big number, 10.3 million square feet on June 12th, 2017. Members of the board include, and we represent a variety of businesses around town, Hassan Jawad, who's our vice chair with Tower Computer Services. Linda Height is our secretary, is Lawrence Technical, Technological University, and Linda's here. Thank you, Linda. Ken Peterson is our treasurer and our resident representative with 5,000 Town Center. Thank you, Ken. And William Burlingame of Eaton Corporation, Matous Nowakowski of Dura Systems Incorporated, Kimberly Peterson from Transwestern, and Michael Khalil, who is here still. Michael, say hello. And we are also represented, representative of the board is Ken Cyver, our mayor, Janet Stevens of Redico, and Josh Swardini of Edken Equities. Just real quickly, we can't do our work, I don't think, as well as we have done without our city liaisons, including Terry Crowde, Rochelle Katz-Freeman, Kyle Bryce, and Marilyn Swanson. So at this point, I'm going to turn this over to Terry and he'll give you a brief outline of all that we are doing, if I don't take his paperwork.
Okay, thank you. One of the things that we tried to do is the council had a visioning session on December 15th, 2017. And we tried to align your vision categories that are abbreviated up here with the things that the boards and commissions are working on. So if you wanted to follow along, those are the nine strategies that the council adopted on December 15th. As Paula had alluded to, the district was expanded in 2016, excuse me, actually, 2017, from 7 million square feet to 10.3 million square feet. There are three strategic initiatives that the city center works on, capital projects, public relations, and promotion special events. One of the top three requests during the master plan process was making pedestrian improvements and pedestrian, expanding the pedestrian network. And the city center has focused on completing the new shared use pathway from Civic Center up to Corporate Drive with a long-term vision goal of having almost three linear miles from Loser all the way down to Nine Mile and tying in with the DDA. They try to leverage their dollars. The city center pledged $150,000, which in partnership with Lawrence Tech, allowed the city to receive a $455,000 SEMCOG Award. And that portion of the shared use pathway will be worked on in 2019. Also, as part of our council's Town and Gown Initiative, as everyone knows, Lawrence Tech is transitioning from a commuter school to a residential campus. There are now over 1,000 students living on campus and that's going to continue to grow. And football is back after 72 years. They had anticipated 2,000 people for their first game and close to 3,900 people showed up. That's bringing parents, friends, and visitors into our city, staying overnight, spending money in our local businesses. Also, to expand our pedestrian network, the city center sponsored a bike share system, which was implemented last year, but this was the first full season of the bike share. We have seven stations, 29 bikes, including two accessible bikes located here at the south pavilion. 284 active members totaling over 680 trips this year. In partnership with the Arts Commission, the city center has provided some matching dollars for the installation of the Northland Art. This year, the crowd was relocated to 3,000 Town Center and leased that the city approved. The profit and the peacock were installed on the municipal campus. Red Pole Park was part of our redevelopment ready certification that qualified the city for MEDC crowdfunding campaign. We were successful in reaching our goal and received a $50,000 grant towards that project. 125,000 people drive by it every day on Northwestern Highway. And we also have been successful in having three pieces of art donated to us by both residents and non-residents alike. As Ms. Freeman had shared in the study session with Centropolis, we developed a five-year master plan for wayfinding signage as well as streetscape improvements. The city center allocates a certain amount of money each year for implementation and we are in year three to four of the five-year plan that will be completely built out by 2020. These are some examples of new infrastructure that has been installed recently, new wayfinding signage that has been installed recently, specifically concentrating in the new expanded Boundary District. Another one of our goals is to promote sustainability through green infrastructure and these interpretive panels helped to build stewardship for future generations over our environment. As part of the third strategic approach is marketing. We currently advertise in partnership with Community Relations in these three magazines. I believe ASource was just delivered today. We're happy to say that we have enough going on in this community to produce four quarterly newsletters that go out to all the businesses and owners in the district. And finally, the city center has been a sponsor, both in volunteer time and seed money on several placemaking events, including the Crohn's and Colitis Walk, the Four E to the Beat Concerts in partnership with Parks and Rec, and the Kimmy Horn Jazz Festival. So with that, Ms. Paula Goldman Spinner and myself are here, if the council has any questions. But we wanted to give you an update of what we're working on.
Doesn't seem to be any question. That's a very good presentation.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Cost.
What's the city center group looking at for restaurants? And I'm talking sit-down restaurants. We have almost 4,000 people that'll be coming to the football games. The L T U is growing. We have young people that are going elsewhere to, use the terminology, hangout. We don't have anything in that section too for young people to go. And I think we have to find some, some businesses, restaurants, not just for lunch, but for those evenings as well. And that whole triangle of, I call it Town Center Two, should develop into what it originally was to develop in its high-rise and eateries and actually a small downtown. And I'd like to see the city center look at that.
Well, one of the things I could just say is we've been using our capital as seed money and leveraging that with other projects on placemaking for the attraction and retention of professionals, students, and residents. And indirectly, all of these activities, including the special events, help to bring more business people into the community as well as residents, which will justify restaurants coming. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
I think our vision, our long-term vision is to, at some point, develop a downtown area. It's long in coming. We've been, you know, working our way towards that. So I think if you go to the city center website, you'll see some of that visionary intent and it's a matter of time, I think.
I was looking at the plan that the consultant put together for the Civic Center Drive and Evergreen and they called for a three-tier parking deck. And I figured that 300 cars, you talk on $9 million to put a parking deck for three instead of 400 some. And I think that they should start scrapping that plan and come in with something that the young people would be attracted to, some commercial with some lofts that may be over them. And they would be facing the Civic Center Drive and Evergreen as opposed to backing up to them because nobody wants to look at the back end of stores. No comment?
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I want to see it done.
Just, just before we let Paula and her group go, the mayor has a presentation to make to the city center board and Mr. Khalil on behalf of Farbman Group. These were the large donors for Red Pole Park and as part of our, part of our, our thank you is these small models. Mr. Khalil, if you want to come up?
Put it on the Christmas tree. What this is all about. Good evening to both of you. We promised anyone that, you know, we did a patronicity campaign. We raised $55,000 and then it was matched by the Economic Development Corporation. And so as an incentive to people to donate and support our campaign, top donors would be given a model of the Red Pole Park. So I'm pleased to present this to both of you. We appreciate your generosity.
Thank you very much.
And we also have one for... And we also have one for...
If the council president would come down, please, on behalf of the city council?
So council president, Brightwell, we want to present this to you. A thank you as a sponsor of the Southfield Red Pole Park. We couldn't have done it without the approval of the council to accept the grant and make this happen in our Northwestern Service Drive right away. Thank you.
I accept this on behalf of the council. It will go in our council study room. It will be permanently displayed. And as I said, when we were dedicating the Red Pole Park, art means nothing unless it's seen. So art has to be seen. So I appreciate that, and we thank you.
Our next presentation is from the Southfield Planning Commission. I'd like to call up Mr. Steve Huntington, the vice chair, and Mr. Jeff Spence, our assistant city planner, to make the next presentation.
My name is Stephen Huntington from the Southfield Planning Commission. I'm sure everybody's familiar with Huntington Bank. That's not me. Sorry to say. But I've been with the planning commission for over ten years. Served in all positions, chair for three terms, vice chair. Actually, I even went and got certified as a master citizen city planner when I first started. I think I needed to learn a little bit more, and it has helped me. I've been in the building industry for about thirty-five years, doing renovations, commercial, residential, environmental inspections, and also project management. I want to thank the, I want to thank you guys for inviting us. I know you guys read everything we speak about in our meetings, word for word, I heard. And I also want to take this time to introduce the commissioners that may be in the audience. I see Commissioner Mead. I want you to stand up. Any commissioners in the audience? I see Commissioner Dentson also. Good to have you here. We have a very diverse group, different backgrounds. We have architects on staff. We have the builder mind. We have the legal mind. And this helps us give a biased, unbiased determination of the different projects. Terry Crowe spends a lot of time with the planning commission in making sure we understand the different zonings and special use, site plans, street vacations, future land regulations, and designations. When I first got here, I hadn't even met the city planner. I was here for three years, never met him, never had a conversation with him. But I can tell you firsthand that we have two of the best city planners in the state with Terry Crowe and Jeff Spence. I can tell you that for a fact. It's been exciting times this year in the city of Southfield. Nine site plan reviews. And these are companies, a lot of them that have been here for years, which tells me that they like doing business in the city of Southfield, and they plan on staying in the city of Southfield. Got Glassman, the advanced building on Greenfield. Several gas stations are doing away with the old auto service where you got oil and old cars parked all over the place. They're now going to retail. Nice, clean-looking buildings. Makes the whole area looks a lot, look a lot nicer. Paradise Lounge, another site plan. I'm sure some of you guys might have been there years ago, dancing down the base of Ten Mile and Southfield Road. Well, they're back. They spent a lot of money renovating. They put the elevator into place, and they will be serving, you know, full-course meals, live music, and dancing. Okay? Beaumont Parking Expansion. Two big, large parking decks. And a new, exciting site plan we're reviewing right now is Deer Run. It's going to be about thirty-nine total new condos. You know, for years, you heard nobody's going to build new residential in the city of Southfield. We have too many. No more office will get built here. But we have a nice plan we're looking at right now on Lasher Road, Deer Run Park. We have eight special land uses reviews, National Trail Bus, United Auto and Collision, and then again, Advanced Building Retail on Greenfield. Home Depot Outlet, Outlot. You know, for years, we've been going to Home Depot, and you got that big old parking lot there, you never see it full. I haven't even seen it have full. You're just looking at a sea of asphalt. Now we have beautiful buildings there. Two gas stations. We worked on four rezoning requests. And we have, you know, many miscellaneous discussions at the planning commission. Eight Mile Boulevard, Unifying Framework, the capital improvement program. We looked at the TAP grant and non-motorized network. And something else is coming in is the new John Grace Revitalization Plan, Revitalization Plan. That's going to be an interesting project also for the city of Southfield. But we've been spending a lot of time and great deal of effort establishing good new zoning regulations. Some people, they get upset with planning. They want to be able to do whatever they want to with their property. Think if they own the house, or they spend a lot of money on a project, they should be able to do whatever they want to do. But, you know, good zoning practices will help preserve property values here in Southfield. And that's what we intend to do. Zoning not well-crafted or not changed over the period of years as society has changed often lead to unintended consequences and often prevent economic development. One case in hand is at the Home Depot location with the Outlots there. It's, the zoning said you can't have a restaurant if you have less than four units being built. Okay? We had four units being built. Everything was going fine. The bank decided they needed two units. Now you only had three units available, which mean you can't have a restaurant there, which we had set. Okay? That's stopping development, good development. We took a look at the requirements and the zoning and made some amendments. No one could figure out why it had to be four and it couldn't be three. There was no really good reason for it. We made the adjustments, and now we have a restaurant also going at Southfield in Twelve Mile area. Overall, I think you can take a look at the city of Southfield and see the changes. We definitely head in the right direction. Some people think that the Southfield City, the planning commission, just rubber-stamps projects, and that's not the truth. Many projects come in, but they all treat the exact same way, whether it's a small person trying to do a daycare or a million-dollar business. Each project, when they come in, we take a good look at them. Most of them have issues. That's why they come into the planning commission. But we try to make it work out. We don't just push them out the door when they come in with a bad project. We work with them. We spend a lot of time with the blueprints and trying to figure things out. Some of the issues are small, but some of the issues are quite major, where the size of the building may need to be cut down or turned or whatever. But before they, before we send it to the city council, we try to make sure that we send a plan that the city can live with, and that's going to be good for everyone. But thanks again for allowing me to speak and the planning commission, and we look forward to doing good things in the future.
Thank you. Is there available questions?
That said, unless the planning commission has any comments or questions for us.
Jeff, you want to talk about this?
Yeah, if I may, just on the last slide. A number of years ago, the planning department instituted this planning department projects online. And what it gives the general public, the residents of Southfield, the ability to go online, and every single one of those stars that's shown on that plan is actually a project currently going on in the city of Southfield. Could be in different status, could be under construction, could be just going through the planning commission right now, could be going through council. It does give a case number, the case name, the description of the project, the applicant, the location, and it is just a great resource, a great tool for our residents to be able to go to this particular site and see projects that are going on in the city, and then a particular status of that, of that particular case. This was something that was actually instituted in Troy. They actually brought it over to Southfield, and again, it is just a great tool that we have, just to keep our residents informed as to what's going on in the city.
Okay. If I could add, as Mr. Spence has alluded to, the basic information there is, and then we have a high-level colored landscape plan and a colored elevation. So if you want to get into the weeds of the engineering plans, you can come down to the building department and review those plans. This gives you a fast snapshot of what's happening in the city.
Okay. Mr. Fraser?
Question. If a person was online with that, and they saw the star, if they clicked on a star, does that template come up so that they can see what that star means?
That's correct, yep. Right, and then they can further click to get a picture, some of those elevations that we showed earlier.
It's a good idea.
So they could just say, hey, this is the neighborhood I live in. I'm just interested in these, and click on. Or they can click on any star within the community. And we, we keep this active through construction. So if something was approved eighteen months ago, it's under construction, you can find it. Once the project's been closed out, we update it. But we update this monthly.
Good.
All right. It was an excellent presentation. And I would like to commend the planning department for being a very hard-working department. I've dealt with them a couple of times individually. And with this, this is a council project that I started last year, making sure all the boards and commissions run through city council and give us a presentation of what they are doing that supports the city's goals and objectives. And so, the presentation that we've had thus far within the last few months are extremely beneficial, insightful, and it goes to indicate that the city's ideas are being supported by our boards and commissions. And this will be something that I make sure will go on into perpetuity up until we get through all the boards and commissions. And probably by that time, we'll just start back over with A and going back through Z with respect to all the boards and commissions. So Tara, I want to commend you for really putting your effort and time into making sure these were thorough presentations tonight.
And I just want to recognize Kyle Bryce and Jeff Spence, who also helped with the presentations.
Great.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd just like to say thank you to Steve and Terry and everyone. I was also on the planning commission for several years, and we worked very well together, and the presentation tonight was exceptional. So thank you very much, and a great job.
Okay. We will now have a presentation by our waste disposal contractor, Green for Life. Please come forward. And since this is, was added to this particular section, please give us, Larry, give us your address, I mean, name, address, and...
Okay, council, I'm going to turn this over to Sam Caremagnol of GFL.
Okay.
Hello, Sam Caremagnol of GFL, at thirty-nine thousand Van Born, Wayne, Michigan, four-eight-one-eight-four. This is, the primary reason for being here tonight is a follow-up to a June meeting we had regarding some service issues that we were, we were experiencing. I described those service issues as a staffing problem to some extent because of the driver shortage in the, nationwide for that matter, but in the metro Detroit area. And we also had a service problem, and it was, it was related to a lack of, a lack of real control of our workforce on the street. We had a route manager out there that was not performing very, very well. Following the meeting with you folks, we, we had a good, good conversation with him, a couple of meetings as well. And the fact of the matter is, he just did not, he did not perform, did not perform well, and we found ourselves having to make a change. So we made a change of that route manager in the first week of August. Since then, that route manager has made some staffing changes in the city of Southfield as well. And I'm glad to announce that from the statistics that we have either through the city of Southfield or our call center at GFL, we've seen that the complaints have dropped in half, less than half of what they were, on all fronts, whether it's missed trash collection, missed recycle collection, general complaints, or brush chipping. We've seen those complaints drop dramatically, and I'm happy to see that. With that being said, are they where we want them today? No, but we're steady, we're seeing a steady drop in complaints through the statistics. You're probably hearing of some still, but they are dropping. Statistics show that.
All right. Is that it, Sam?
That, you know, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take them. But I'd also like to tell you that since we've talked, we have opened up a Michigan Regional Office here in Southfield as well, the city center building over here. We occupy the entire second floor. We've got only fifty folks that are working right now, but that's yet to grow, and we're happy to be part of operations in, actually, the city of Southfield.
Okay. Council? And I have seen those trend lines. I've seen that since April, numbers have been going down. I personally have been tracking on it since our May twenty-ninth meeting. That meeting's kind of stuck in my head because that was a pivotal point with respect to what will happen after this particular meeting. And looking at the trend numbers I'm getting from Larry, from our DPW office, and things are trending downward. So that means you have been responsive. Obviously, you indicated there's work to be done also.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing all the questions, that's, that's it?
Thank you. Good night.
All right, thank you then. Now we move to appointments. Mr. Mayor?
This evening, I have the appointment of the city attorney, Beth Ray O'Donnell. Her, you've received a copy of her contract at a proposed contract at an earlier meeting, and you've had a discussion on the hiring process. And this evening, you received a revised outline of how the hiring process will work going forward. Ms. Ray O'Donnell worked for the city for twenty-three years. She left to get some other experience in private practice and applied for this position. We were looking for a person who is an expert in Michigan municipal law. And we found it in two of the candidates, and our, the selection committee chose Beth Ray O'Donnell. So I'm asking for approval of her appointment this evening.
Mr. President?
Mr. Fraser?
I move that we appoint Elizabeth Ray O'Donnell as our new city attorney.
Support? The movement by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Focassi, that we approve Ms. Ray O'Donnell as our new city attorney.
Do you vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Madam, can we get a...
A roll call, yes. Cruz?
Opposed.
Focassi?
Yes.
Fraser?
Yes.
Morris?
Opposed.
Taylor?
Opposed.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Brightwell?
Yes.
Appointment has passed.
Let me, let me just add one thing. We will, we will not have outbursts, but it has, it came to my attention that Ms. Ray O'Donnell mentored our current city acting city attorney when she was here previously. And we are thoroughly appreciative of that, and I think that would be indicative of the type individuals that we will bring forward, the ones that are interested in developing staff. So I just want to add that to, to the commentary. So I just want to add that to, um, uh, to the commentary. Okay, Ms. Ray O'Donnell, I think you need to be sworn in, please come forward.
Thank you, uh, for the point, the appointment, um, honorable members of council, and I look forward to serving you.
Thank you.
Just raise your right hand for me, I say I do when I'm done. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state, and I will support this charter of the city of Southfield. And I will faithfully disform, uh, the duties of the city attorney according to the best of my ability. Sign right here for me.
Who don't boo? So Ms. McDonald, when you finish your signature, Ms. Ray, Ms. O'Donnell, please come around and, uh. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, it has come to my intention that we have noisy eaters in the crowd. Uh, so this room is not, you are not allowed to eat in this particular room. And you're not to have beverages and/or food, so if you need to eat, uh, please exit the room with your food. Okay.
You ever discussed it?
Okay, well.
I was the one that was eating and I am diabetic.
Yes.
I thought that my blood sugar dropped, so I ate a few, um, M and M's, so I apologize to you.
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's fine, that's fine. All right, we will, uh, proceed on with the, um, reappointment to the city advisory board.
Sort of serendipitous, um, tonight, uh, you heard the, um, update from the city center advisory board. They've accomplished a lot, uh, in the last few years. And, uh, we have, uh, three, uh, persons that I'm recommending to the council for reappointment. I'd like to call up Paula Goldman Spinner, Michael Kalil, and Kenneth Peterson.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mandelbaum?
I'd like to move the reappointments of Paula Goldman Spinner, Michael Kalil, and Kenneth Peterson to the city center advisory board.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Mandelbaum, supported by Mr. Frazier, that we approve the, the individuals identified to the city center advisory board. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The appointments are approved.
All right, uh, Ms. Hawkins will do the swearing in.
Everybody raise your right hand for me. I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the state, and the charter of the city of Southfield. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of cit- city center advisory board according to the best of my ability. Congratulations. Yes.
I'd also mention that, uh, Mr. Kalil has, has his alternate, uh, Brian Seoma, correct? Paula? This way, we'll have you.
Right here, sign right there for me. Yes. Thank you.
Go around and shake hands with the, uh, council. Mr. Peterson? Thank you.
That's okay. It's okay. Sign right there for me.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're now into the consent agenda of, uh, the consent agenda items on our agenda. As I've stated before, uh, I will just give the highlights of the items. Please go to, if you need additional details, please go to our city clerk's site, look on the council meetings and you will see all the details that we have as council members.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Item number A is withdrawn and will be brought back at a later date.
Okay, and, so I'll make that. Item number A has been withdrawn and will be brought back at a later date. We replaced, I mean, item A, we replaced that item with, um, the two thousand nine council meeting agenda. Uh, that item will be, um, in the city clerk's package of information provided to city council, it'd be under the study session. And the, our meeting schedule is pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, council must adopt a schedule of council meetings for the twenty nineteen calendar year. And that, uh, and you will find this attachment in the package, the proposed schedule takes under consideration the budget process, nineteen, twenty nineteen conference dates, legal holidays, and elections for twenty nineteen. We will now go to consent agenda item B.
Mr. President, just for the record, we want, uh, in the study session, we talked about moving the July meetings, just for the public record, so we'll have the meetings in July being the eighth, the fifteenth, and the twenty-second. It'll be no longer a meeting in the first week of July. So I just want the public to be, uh, knowledgeable in that change that was made in the study session. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and the final, uh, schedule will be published, um, I'm sure no later than January thirty-one for the whole year of twenty nineteen.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put it in publication as soon as it's passed.
Okay. We will now move to consent agenda item B. The Southfield Subcommittee of the Local Development Financing Authority, update for fiscal twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget approval. The Michigan Smart Zone Network con- connects universities, industry, research organizations, government, and other community institutions to stimulate, to stimulate, to stimulate the growth of the technology-based businesses and job, jobs. In twenty eight, in twenty fourteen, the Southfield Subcommittee of the Joint LDFA Authority, along with Automation Alley, Automation Alley Regional Authority Project, was one of the three LDFAs in the state of Michigan to receive, uh, an opportunity to seek a fifteen-year extension from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. This honorable body approved a resolution at the August eleventh, twenty fourteen regular meeting, which enabled the Southfield Smart Zone to move forward with, with the old permission, with A permission, uh, extension. The objective of the Southfield Smart Zone is to promote growth around the city defined at a certified technology park, particularly growth related to industries engaged in high technology. The fiscal impact of this, the Southfield Centropolis Smart Zone has an estimated annual cash flow in the, in excess of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The state of Michigan strongly encourages tax increment financing authorities to utilize funds for activities in the tax increment financing and development plan. Staff is requesting that the city council adopt the Southfield Centropolis Smart Zone fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget as approved by Southfield Subcommittee of the Joint LDFA Authority on September twenty-seven, two thousand and eighteen as presented in support of the goals detailed in our planning documents. Consent agenda item C. The establishment of Commercial Rehabilitation District PA two ten of two thousand and five as an, as an, as amended for the solo company, solo company LLC, two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield Road. Background and fiscal impact. City staff is in receipt of a request from solo company for a commercial exemption certificate to assist with the rehabilitation of the corner, of the cornerstone complex located at two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield Road. In order to facilitate this request, the city of Southfield will be required to establish a commercial rehabilitation district pursuant to Michigan Public Act two ten, two-ten of twenty oh five as amended. Public Act two-ten of two oh five encourages the rehabilitation of commercial property by abating property taxes generated from new investments for a period of up to ten years. Upon review of the solo company request, city staff is remet, is recommending that city of Southfield establish a district for two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield to assist with necessary renovation of the plaza. Recommendations. The staff respectfully recommend that the coun- uh, council adopt a public hearing on Monday, November the nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to consider the establishment of a commercial rehabilitation district pursuant to Michigan Public Act two-ten of two thousand and five as amended. Consent agenda, agenda item D. Budget adjustment for the bid of the purchase of a new production server. In August of twenty eighteen, our honorable body approved the city cable, cable TV department to seek bids for the purchase of a new video server, which has been experiencing problems and has reached its end-of-life status. Council approved the cost of no more than forty-five thousand dollars, and that was in August of eighteen. When they went out to bid, the fiscal impact is the project now cost is forty thousand, four hundred and thirty and will be financed by an increase in expenditures and a pot, and a corresponding decrease in the useful fund balance account. The council hereby approved the budget adjustment for the cable TV department from cable fund in amount of forty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. And authorized the cable TV department to purchase the vi- the video production server from the Film Two slash VTP, that's the firm, for forty thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. Consent agenda item E. Approval to purchase ebooks and downloadable auto, audiobooks for the Southfield Public Library from Overdrive Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio. Beginning in two, in twenty-ten, the library began purchasing ebooks and downloadable audiobooks for patrons used from Overdrive through Metro Net. The library requests approval for a two-year period to begin on July one, two thousand and eighteen, and expire June thirty, twenty twenty. It is requested that this relationship, due to its sole source nature, be approved for a two-year period. Fiscal impact. Total cost of these materials should not exceed fifteen thousand annually. Funds are provided for these purchases in the approved twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen library books and tapes budget for adults and children's services budget for adult services. And we, and will be provided in the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty library budget as the council may approve. Consent agenda item F. Application for charitable gaming leasing. Southfield Lathof Junior Football League Incorporated. Southfield Lathof Junior Football League is requesting to be recognized as a nonprofit organization operated in the city of Southfield for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license from the state of Michigan to conduct a raffle for their, their organization. The charitable gaming license would be used for a trap, for a raffle to raise funds to purchase equipment, uniforms, and training to reduce the player's likelihood of a concussion. In addition, funds will be used to provide an opportunity for less fortunate kids to experience and gain skills that promote positive values, healthy habits, and education through the game of football. The raffle will be held at the University High School Academy on Thursday, November fifteenth, twenty eighteen at six-thirty. In the state of here, all the necessary paperwork has been provided, it is recommended that our honorable body give favorable consideration to this request. Consent agenda item G. Cable fifteen televising of Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings. Background, the administration has recently had a request to begin televising both the planning commission meeting as well as the zoning board of appeals. This request prompted a basic cost analysis of taping and televising both the planning commission and zoning board of appeals meetings. It is, it is common for communities of outside to televise not only city council meeting, but also planning commission and ZBA meetings. The fiscal impact of this, uh, project would be, is nominal and should not exceed eight thousand per year. It should be noted that the administration has concerns regarding cable TV long-term fiscal sustainability. The recommendation, it is recommended that the city council approve a resolution authorizing filming, editing, and broadcasting of both the city of Southfield Planning Commission and the zoning, zoning board of appeal meetings. Consent agenda item H. Authorization to terminate the contract of lan- landscape ma- maintenance. On April thirty, twenty eighteen, conc- council authorized a contract for the, for landscape maintenance, maintenance. This is a, this is a request to terminate the agreement in accordance with section fifteen of the contract. The contractor has failed to perform the level of service required as originally intended and anticipated when the contract was awarded. Recommendation is the, the office of the city administrator recommend that council adopt the accompanying resolution terminating the contract of landscape maintenance in accordance as indicated. Those are our consent agenda items.
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we approve the substituted, uh, consent agenda item A through, and B through H.
Support.
It's been moved by Mr. Frazier and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve the substituted item A and, and the following items, B through H. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The consent agenda items are approved as presented. So we have no public hearing. Uh, we have no site plans. We will go into, uh, public communication, but let me make a, a little announcement. Here, as everyone probably know, you have three minutes. But the council has come on, um, criticism for allowing, um, certain type of, um, vocal language, so, uh, we will not, I've have read our official rules, but I'm just gonna say a blank, we will not allow belligerent, bellicose, or vulgar language, uh, while you're at the, um, podium, nor will you address individuals, uh, directly. All questions through to council will have to come through the council president. So with respect to that, it's, it's, um, and given the world events, you know, we, we realize words matter, you know, words actually matter. And it, and it seriously has come to our attention that we, we will not allow this bellicose vulgar language that, that has, uh, transpired. With respect to next, we will now go into public communication with Ms., um, also, um, well, I would, if you are going off into a certain trend of conversation, I will ask you to stop. And if you don't stop, we will ask you to be removed from the conversation.
For communications, we have a right to say whatever we want.
For communications, we have a right to say whatever we want.
Ms. Gerald, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to everybody here.
Well, let me have my time because you called my name and you keep flip-flopping, going back and forth.
I just told you, wait.
I just want my three minutes.
If I ask you to cease and stop talking, if you do not do that, we will ask the office to remove you.
If it's within my three minutes, I'm not going to stop. I got three minutes.
Ms. Gerald, what are you talking about? I'm talking-
What are you talking about? You called my name and I'm up there.
No, he didn't.
You said we'll get to communications, the first name on the list. So are we on the list yet, or you want me to sit down? You want, you going to say some more?
Sit down.
Well, I'm going to stand up then, since you told me to sit down. So just, I'll wait till you finish.
See, this is not a playground. This is really not a playground.
It's not.
Where's the officer? Where's the police officer?
Where's the police officer? Yeah, we have the chief. So this is not a playground. We have, the council has decided that we will definitely not allow certain conversations. And we realize words matter. This is not a playground. We affect the lives of from one to almost 200,000 people. So we have to have respect for this particular chamber. If you don't, you will be asked to be removed. We will now recognize in the communication Ms. Pamela Gerald.
And my husband is also diabetic. When you talked about the eating in here, you didn't clarify that if you're diabetic, you could snack. Members of the Southfield Latho Dem Club received an email regarding campaign signs for Judge Deborah Nance. My family and several other Dem Club members were appalled to receive the email letter because it was not pertaining to business regarding the Southfield Latho Dem Club. I have a question. Who gave out the private email addresses of the Dem Club members that is only supposed to be used for Democratic Club business? I am also appalled with the letter that came from Judge Deborah Nance because a lot of information was not included in the letter. For example, myself and others put out campaign signs for the following candidates. Kyra Harris Bolden, State Rep, District 35. Jake Cunningham, Oakland County Probate Court. Chris Gravelin, Michigan State Attorney General. And Kamisha Gant, Right End Candidate for 46th District Court. At a lot of the sign placement points where we put signs, and many of those properties are owned by my personal friends, all four of those signs came up missing. And what was coincidental, a day later, signs came up in that same place for Judge Deborah Nance. So I think myself, along with the other residents, we're just really getting sick and tired of this sign war. Because signs, and how many you have out, do not get you elected. It is the votes that come from the people, going to the polls and via absentee ballots. So all of this sign war stuff, I am asking you to stop, whoever you are, doing all of this sign horrific things. I'm going to be doing a tutorial on sign placement, the do's and don'ts. We have a city clerk here, and any candidate that becomes a candidate for office in the city of Southfield, you're given a packet. And in that packet, it tells you places where you should not put campaign signs. Now, if you are an incumbent, you should know that signs don't go in the right of way. For example, you put it to the property side of the sidewalk, not the side to the curb from the sidewalk. So let's stop all of this stuff with these campaign signs. Signs do not get you elected. It is the vote, and it's the absentee vote. And I just want to say that if our names are on a list for emails regarding business, that is not to be used for personal communication. No more emails.
Next person to be recognized is Mr. Mullen.
Good evening. My name is Gerard Mullen, Southfield Citizens Oversight Committee, Post Office, Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037. Tonight, I would like to talk about Section 6.20. Section 6.20 was added to the Southfield City Charter in 1966. 6.20 is entitled "Fire and Police Departments' Parody of Compensation." And I quote from Section 6.20. "Members of the police and fire departments shall receive equal annual wages." Sad to say, there is no parody today or yesterday in annual wages between the Southfield Police Department and the Southfield Fire Department in violation of this charter. For example, as of June 30, 2018, the police chief pay grade is S, while the fire chief's pay grade is R, one grade lower. To be more precise, the police chief receives 4.8% more in annual wages than the fire chief in violation of this charter. Another example, at the other end of the wage spectrum, is the annual starting wage for a firefighter, which is 3.8% greater than for a patrolman in violation of this charter. How do you folks on this council justify or explain this? Aren't you folks afraid, afraid of lawsuits by the various unions, or by a class action, or by individuals, or by all of, or by some of, the aforementioned, costing this city, that is us taxpayers, millions and millions of dollars? Think about it. Going back in time, as far back as 52 years, depending on the statute of limitations, then adjust for inflation, including recalculated pension and healthcare benefits, plus compound tort interest. Now we're talking, talking really big bucks. All because you folks here, here on this council, failed, failed to obey this charter. In other words, Mr. Chairman, you failed, failed to take care of business, this city's financial business. Thank you.
Mr. Mullen. Next person to be recognized, Ms. Jody Harris.
I'm Jody Harris. I've lived in Beechwood Acres since 2001. I'm here to speak about the ordinance 1571. I was here two weeks ago, and I know you heard several citizens mention the different talking points. I would just like to say that when I was at that meeting, I heard Kimberly Mosley Madison come up here and say that she wanted to purchase a home for $280,000 in my neighborhood. And based on her research and finding out about the ramifications of ordinance 1571, she and her husband decided not to purchase that home. So immediately, I'm thinking, I've lived here since 2001. I bought at the top of the bubble, and then it plummeted, my property value plummeted. And I'm very concerned about property value. I see my time seems to be running out. And then I heard two other people come up here. I heard Nina Bolo say that she just bought last year. She would not have bought if she'd known about this ordinance. I heard Joan Webb, who's retired, she planned her budget on her pension to buy in my neighborhood. And with this ordinance, she's afraid that she can't afford to live here. I'm a retired school teacher, and I'm afraid that I can't afford to live here any longer because I'm asked to hook up to the city for a huge amount of money. You've offered a loan at the first, at a sort of 15-year loan, and I don't want to take a loan on my property. I would like to just live peaceably in my neighborhood. And this has caused just so much anxiety and concern about whether I can even afford to live in this neighborhood, and if I can even sell my home due to what this ordinance is doing to my property value. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Excuse me.
Ms. Fraser.
Could I ask you a couple of questions?
Who's asking me?
Yes. Could I ask you a couple of questions? When you bought your home, did you know you were on septic system?
I knew I was on a septic system. I was never received a letter about this ordinance 1571.
Has your septic system failed a test, or is it?
No, it has passed at this point.
Have you done the proper maintenance on your septic system?
Yes, I have.
What is your concern, then?
That one day it's going to fail. I mean, it could fail at some point, and then I'm going to have to hook up to the city for $5,000, plus whatever it costs the contractor to connect from my home to that tap-in.
Do you have enough property that you could rebuild the drain field if you had to? Because if you do regular maintenance, a septic system should last for a long, long time. If you don't do the regular maintenance, like having it pumped on a regular basis, then-
I understand that.
That's when the septic systems start to fail. So-
I do, I understand that. But this whole process, since this is, the time has stopped. The process, starting from the letter that I received in 2016, that said you have 30 days to get this test, everybody was booked all over the city. There was just extreme anxiety, and there just seems to be a pressure to hook up to the city at a huge cost to the citizens. And I don't really feel, based on coming to the last meeting, that you're hearing what our real concerns are. Because I did hear you say at that meeting that the citizens were coming for you, and I don't feel like we're coming for the city council. I feel like I'm speaking, I'm trying to survive. I have a home, and I would like to stay in my home and not be evicted from it in my 60s.
Understood.
That's my concern.
Okay. Thank you.
May I leave now?
Yeah.
Or is there something else? Thank you.
Mr. Keeler.
Greg Keeler, 25170 Circle Drive, Southfield, Michigan. I come here because I want to know, do residents, landlords supersede health and safety codes and laws? Or do they write them, or do they have a yays or nays? Do we send out surveys as to what should be, or should we pass things, or do things improperly so that it affects people's health and safety and well-being? Not just the people at the home, but the whole entire community and beyond the community? Or is health and safety a total different issue that should be handled by people that have license in health and safety? Secondly, when I purchased my home, there was no disclosure given to me. 1992, there is an Act 92 that says, Act 92 of 1993 says that a seller must disclose all defects to the home, to the seller, or to the person that's buying the home. Well, my house just had a recent roof put on it. When the roof was pulled off, found under the roof, there was a cedar shaker roof, which means it shouldn't have been shingled. So it had to be redected. So that was $10,000 to $15,000 extra it cost me that I was not expecting to pay. But if it would have been caught during inspection, which they didn't do at that time, which, when you went and re-roofed the roof and you put on shingles, it shouldn't have been done at that time? So when I bought the house, it had a shingle roof. Also, this caused environmental problems and health issues because my house couldn't maintain the proper humidity level. And I guess I did check it, and yes, I do have a license in that area. And yes, I know exactly where it's supposed to be at. It never stayed there. Now does it stay there? Yes. Is my house probably a greener house than most houses within the city of Southfield? Yes. But my problem will be, how can I sell a house that does not have a sewer line if you want to come in the house and have anything in the kitchen, any of the modernization things? You cannot have it in my house because I am on a septic tank. So I would like to know, since these 30 years have passed, inspections were spotty, if not shoddy? What will be done to proceed forward? I've asked nine different questions about how come things weren't done in the proper order? How come the sewer lines were placed on Circle Drive and then removed? Does that impact my selling of my house and the value of my house going down as opposed to up?
Mr. Keeler, your time is up, sir. Thank you. Next person to be recognized is Mr. Fred Bunker.
He's not here.
The next person to be recognized is Joseph Person.
Not here.
Not here. The next person, Ms. Toby Rhodes. Not here. We would now, we did mention we would recognize Ms. Yuni Rose.
Thank you for acknowledging me at the last minute. I appreciate it. Yuni Rose, 26477 Franklin Point Drive, here in Southfield. The reason I came to you tonight is I discovered something the other night. I learned about a very interesting treasure that is in storage here but was at Northland Mall. It was hanging on a wall. And it is truly wonderful. It's an eight-by-20 portrait of Motown performers. And it comes in sections, so it would be easy to bring it here, to set it up at a lower cost had it been along the way. It's a rare piece of art that is invaluable, and I just felt we need to have it. It cannot be duplicated. It is unique. It is unique. So I hope that we can come together to make it happen. Then our city will continue to be the place where we enjoy art and culture, big time, big time people, another reason to call us the center of it all. Thank you so much.
We will now move to the council portion of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Cruz.
I'd like to move that we approve the travel expense for Tanya Morris for the MML convention.
Support.
Moved by Mr. Cruz and supported by Mr. Mandelbaum that we approve the expense report for Ms. Tanya Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? It is approved. Additional? Ms. Taylor?
Yep. I was just amazed that Yuni spoke about the Motown mural because someone else had asked about it earlier, and some other people were saying that they knew someone that wanted to purchase that. So it's very important. And I'm just wondering, if someone has an interest, if the city is selling it, first of all, but if somebody had an interest, what would they have to do? What's the process that they would have to go to to get, like, what the cost of it would be if we're going to sell it? I know it has to come back to council, I think. I know it has to come back to council, I think. I don't know the process, but-
It would go to the Art Commission.
So they need to contact Art Commission?
And a value would have to be placed upon it. The Art Commission has no recommendation on that piece at the moment. There was some discussion of seeing if, with the expansion of the Motown Museum, if they would be interested in acquiring it. But nothing has transpired.
So they should just contact the chairperson for the Art Commission?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the recommending body, the council. Ultimately, the decision is council's, of course. The Motown mural is city property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mandelbaum.
I wanted to acknowledge that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Yes.
I noticed that Councilman Fraser is wearing pink, as well as my little lapel flower. But because of improved treatments, as well as earlier detection through screening and increased awareness, a woman's risk of dying of breast cancer has dropped thirty-nine percent since nineteen eighty, translating into more than three hundred thousand breast cancer deaths avoided during that time. There's still a lot to do. There's still people. You need to make sure that you have your regular screening, you get checked, and that you make sure that you are healthy. They're always coming out with new treatments. And if we take preventive measures, we can ensure that everyone can remain healthy and safe. Breast cancer also does affect men at a lower rate, but it can still affect everyone. It is not limited to one specific gender. I'd also like to mention that, I know in the beginning of our meeting, we had a moment of silence for the Pittsburgh massacre that happened on Saturday. My brother lives in Pittsburgh, not far from what happened. He heard all the sirens, not knowing what was going on. I won't get into detail. There's been enough of that on the news. But I would like to thank our Southfield Police Department because they also, after that news, they went into their, I don't want to see a reaction mode, but they stepped up some of their patrols and ensured that some of the Jewish synagogues and schools on Saturday and Sunday, and even this morning, had some increased patrol in those areas just to ensure the safety of those who would be attending and be in those areas. So thank you again to our Southfield Police for that response. We appreciate it. And last, for a fun announcement, starting on November fifth, the Ride with Santa contest will open for all children ages three to eight. Through the Parks and Rec Department, you can contact them at two-four-eight-seven-nine-six four-six-two-zero for a form to fill out. And we will have that with, the contest will close on November thirteenth. So there is a very small window. So November fifth, it does open, again, for any Southfield child ages three to eight years old. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I have a couple of veterans announcements. I'm sorry, Mr. Fraser.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I've been waiting last.
I just want to make this statement. I've heard a few comments that people that are either watching or in the audience see me sit here with my eyes closed, and they think I'm asleep. I want to set the record straight. I have an eye problem. I've had laser surgery on both of my eyes, but it's left me with a very high sensitive sensitivity to light. So the amount of light that shines on it kind of bothers my eyes. So I close my eyes to give my eyes a break, but I'm listening to everything that's going on. So I just want everybody to know I'm not asleep, but I do have an eye problem. And sometimes I shade my eyes like this, sometimes I just have my eyes closed, but I'm awake, listening, and trying to make the best decisions for the city of Southfield.
Okay. With respect to a couple of veterans announcements. And when I was the chair of the Veterans Commission, we hosted a veteran informational seminar at least twice a year for almost eight to nine years. And we had quite a few individuals that turned out. And we have a large veterans population in the city of Southfield. According to the last census I saw, there's about five thousand nine hundred and ninety-six individuals have a veteran in the city of Southfield. And one of the biggest items that husband and wife, they would come out typically in teams to find out what was available to them. And the biggest item that got the most attention would be veterans burial services. Individuals from Holly would come down, and they would make a presentation. Holly National Cemetery, National Veteran Cemetery would come down and make a presentation. And what I'm going to mention right here is how you get involved in that. You get a preapproval, preapproval form for burials at a national cemetery. You can submit your form to the VA for the preapproval to be buried at a national cemetery. Understanding that there's a large wait time. But you can contact Oakland County Veteran Services to get the form, which is Form forty-dash-one-zero-zero-seven. Oakland County Veteran Services can be contacted at two-four-eight-six-five-five-one-two-five-zero. On Saturday, November three, the University of Michigan in Dearborn and love a Michigan vet are hosting their two thousand eighteen Female Veterans Stand Down from ten AM to two PM at the university, which is at nineteen thousand Herbert Drive in Dearborn. Veteran services that are offered to the female vets. And by the way, last year, they helped out, well, they supplied over three hundred women veterans with services in recognition of their veteran services. Some of the items that were included were closing, benefit counseling, referral to other, and other assistance such as healthcare, housing solutions, employment, substance, and mental health counseling. That, you can contact the University of Michigan at Dearborn for more information on that. The other item, these really kind of relate to job opportunities. On November five, Monday, November five, the Detroit Pistons will be hosting their annual Hoop for Vets game at the Caesars, in a career pair at Little Caesars Arena from ten AM to two PMs. Veterans attending will get free tickets to the game, and also they will get employment opportunities there. If you want to get additional information, please reach them at two-four-eight-three-seven-seven-eight-six-five-seven. Additionally, on November the seventh, which is a Wednesday, the Southfield Veterans Post twenty-six forty-five, located at two-four-two-two-two West Nine Mile, from five to seven PM, they will have their spaghetti dinner, which will include a salad, meals, and desserts. And lastly, on November the ninth, the John Dingell VA Center will be hosting a Veterans Outreach Program from nine AM to three PM at the Dingell on John R. Downtown. And that will be in room B-one-two-nine-zero. You will get, this is, the VA is really trying to assist veterans with all their life circumstances. And I'm going to name a couple of them here that they will be assisting with them. And just like when we had our seminars, some of the information might not be useful to you, but it could be useful to your neighbor, a relative, or someone that you know who might be a veteran. On November the ninth, during those particular hours, nine to three PM, they will assist you with child support assistance. They will get you, they will assist you with driver's license registration. The U of D Law School will assist you with discharge upgrades. And also, there will be a judge there, Judge Deborah Thomas, who will assist veterans with expungements. Those are some very significant life circumstances that affect veterans and obviously reckless civilians. But I would like for you, if you know of someone that can utilize those services or they need those particular needs, tell them to reach out to the VA Medical Center downtown November the ninth. So with that, those are the council items.
Did you give the time for the spaghetti dinner?
Let me verify. The spaghetti dinner is from five PM to seven PM.
Okay.
Five PM to seven PM. And that's a very good spaghetti dinner. You get a nice helping. You should stay full for about two and a half days. I'm trying to help the veterans. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. As I mentioned earlier, we're changing the format somewhat of Veterans Day today, this year, rather. There were complaints that the program was not drawing very many people. And so we're trying another approach. I hope it works. And that is to invite the public to participate in the program. No one has to preregister to speak. But if they do have questions about the Veterans Day program, it is, again, Friday, the ninth of November at eleven o'clock in council chambers. And questions can be either directed to my office or to Michael Mannion in Community Relations. And again, we're inviting anyone who would like to come forward and do a remembrance of a veteran to feel free to do so. The second thing I want to talk about today is our annual Big Rake. The Big Rake was going to start on November third, except we don't have enough leaves to start the volunteer effort. We are hoping to begin the Big Rake on Saturday, November tenth. Starts at nine AM here for volunteers reporting. We've had a number of people come forward to volunteer, and we are registering people who need the assistance. In other words, they have physical capacity to maintain their own yard. Again, last year, we did a hundred and twenty yards. We're probably on track to do about the same this year. We're very thankful to the donations of yard waste bags from Lowe's, from Home Depot, and from Great Lakes Ace Hardware, Twelve Mile, and Greenfield. Plus, we've had cash donations because we're running low on rakes from the Southfield Nonprofit Housing Board, Habitat for Humanity, and Fred Zorn. Earlier today, I was asked to come over to the campus of Lawrence Tech. They had put together a program in response to the tragedy in Pittsburgh on Saturday. And a number of people spoke at that program. And I think the recurring theme was that we've had an erosion of civil discourse. We see it in this chamber. And the lack of the ability to agree, to disagree. This polarization in our country. I think it's given license for some people to feel that they can do these violent things, whether it's being a shooter or mailing pipe bombs or whatever else. And there's been a lot of criticism about being politically correct. Personally, I find nothing wrong with political correctness. To me, political correctness is about tolerance, acceptance for differences, and sensitivity to the differences among us. And I hope that, again, we continue to have, hold standards in this chamber for appropriate civil discourse. Additionally, the, you know, we saw a video last week, and I thought it was very telling in a lot of circumstances, that people tend to act when they're alone and they see something. And when they're in a group, there's sort of a paralysis. People don't always respond. And it really comes down to, if you see something, say something. Or if someone is inappropriate, that you don't ignore it, that it's something to challenge. I know anytime someone makes a, in my hearing, a disparaging remark that is disparaging in the way of ethnic background, racial background, religious background, I don't let, I challenge that. I don't say it's okay, at least not in my presence. And I think we need all to do more of that. Thank you for listening.
Administration?
The administration has nothing to add. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Attorney?
Attorney has nothing to add.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Just a few things. I want to thank Don for being our acting city attorney for the last couple of weeks.
Yes.
Thanks for stepping up. And furthermore, we got eight more days until the election. Things have been rather busy. If things continue on upward trend of our absentee ballots, we would have succeeded the amount of absentee ballots that we sent out in 2016. So it would be, it really has a two thousand and eight presidential feel with this election. The electricity that's just been in the lobby, it's been crazy, in a good way. So we're already seeing those large numbers. Ask all the voters as going to the polls, please be patient, please research your candidates ahead of time. It's a front and a back ballot. And we're looking, on average, it could take anywhere from seven to fifteen minutes to complete your ballot. So please try to do as much resource, research, I should say, as possible on the front end. We are open every day for absentee ballots. We are open this Saturday from nine until two for absentee ballots. For that matter, every clerk's office in the state is open during that time. So if you know someone that needs to vote absentee, please send them in. It's for the first time in over a hundred and forty years here in the state of Michigan that we will be voting with no straight party ticket voting. So with that being said, the lines are going to be long. There's no way to avoid that. So you're going to have to pack your patience. And just please try to help anyone and talk to people and try to get them to vote absentee. Thank you. Good night.
I'm wondering if I could add that it would be, it would help matters at the polls if people came prepared, knowing the proposals, knowing who their candidates are. I know that sometimes people arrive and they need time to study things. So that might be something that would help us.
Right. And we did have a newsletter that everyone should have gotten. We hit every household here in the city of Southfield in conjunction with the app that's still up and running. So we have different resources for different learning styles. And just hopefully, everyone comes to the polls being an informed voter. Thank you.
Let me just hitchack on what the city clerks said about Ms. King. Ms. King and I, as council president, I woke up one morning, I had meetings coming out of my ears. And since Ms. King's been the acting member, I mean, acting attorney, I've seen her at every meeting. So I want to commend her for stepping up. And she put both hands and feet in. She was excellent from jump, from the initial start with her knowledge of law, with her knowledge of municipal law, and knowledgeable of circumstances. And on a couple of occasions, we were in a meetings, and Ms. King had to do research. And the next morning, she had done her research, and she produced- and she produced the documents that, 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 uh, that were there. So, um, I, I hate to see you go. Uh, you, you've been a, a talent, but I got a feeling you might want some normalcy in your life. You want to get back some normalcy?
Thank you, but I, I'll, I'll be here.
Okay. All right, no, you're, you were, you were spectacular and I'm, I'm just glad to, uh, glad I was able to, to work with you. You've had a short period of time I was and, and you, uh, you lived up to, um, to your, to the word that you're a very good lawyer.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. We have anything from the planner?
Mr. Treasurer?
Treasurer?
He was here, I guess he was.
Yeah. The engineer, assessor? Nothing to schedule? We have two ordinances to enact?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we enact ordinance number sixteen ninety-seven.
Support.
It's been moved and supported that we enact ordinance number sixteen ninety-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. President?
Mr. Frazier?
I move that we enact ordinance number sixteen ninety-eight.
Support.
Removed by Mr. Frazier, supported by Ms. Taylor, that we enact ordinance number sixteen ninety-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's, the ordinance is enacted. With that, the meetings adjourned. Thank you.